We're not getting started. Okay, call the meeting order. Chris, you want to just go ahead and go first?
Yeah. I put a bid out for a new mower for our park. And this is the only bid I got, but they included two different mowers on there.
I'll get two copies. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So, the first mower has a back tire that doesn't go flat. On that one, a seventy-two inch deck, it's thirteen thousand three ninety-two. And then the second mower that they gave us a price estimate is the one that just had the regular tires, and that one's twelve thousand five hundred seven. So... I'm all right with either one, if we can get one.
Has there been any conversation on the lead time?
Do what?
Has there been any conversation on the lead time?
Uh, no, there hasn't.
You think they'd get it fairly quick, or...
I think that we could probably have it by Memorial Day, up here by May or something.
I think they're getting stocked right now.
Yeah.
Most of the dealers are stocked. Those are winter shipments.
There's a whole bunch of them out here in town.
Yep.
Different things.
Do you have much tire trouble?
Uh, if I got the basic model, I'd probably still go ahead and upgrade it, because that's what we did with our SCAG. So you don't have to replace them as much. So, that first one comes with a twill, which is a tire that doesn't go flat, so...
That's the ones that basically have them little flaps in there.
Yeah.
It gives the suspension to it, but they don't hold air, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Kind of thing.
Yeah.
Butler has one of those, he likes them.
Well, most of the commercial mowers anymore are going that way, it seems like.
Yeah.
I see them all the time.
Well, you don't have the flat tire issue.
Right.
And they do ride better.
Well, I don't know how many ride, but they don't go flat, obviously.
Yeah, they do ride quite a bit better.
Um...
They do really well. All the state parks actually have them now, so...
Do they handle an incline a lot better than regulars?
Yeah, they're not going to slide down the lake, are they? Yeah, I hope not.
Hopefully. So what do you, what do you need from us then? I mean, you have some money in your budget for this. I mean, do we need to help you try to come up with some money, or what do you need from us?
Yeah, I'm looking for a work, because the SCAG broke at the end of last, last year, the frame broke on it.
Ooh.
So, it's, it's out of commission. So I'm just down to the John Deere diesel, and that thing is very, very slow, and it's about twenty years old.
Is that a, more or less, a tractor with a deck under it?
Pretty much, yeah. We use it to mow our wildflowers and our trails. So, the zero turn was real handy getting the campground ready.
And you're mowing the rest of the park with one mower?
At this, well, at this point. We got, we got that one repaired, but it's just a matter of time for it.
No, I mean, let's take that one out of the equation. I mean, you're, you're mowing the rest of the park with this new, with this new mower. You're mowing the rest of the park with that.
Yeah, that, and then the John Deere if we get time, so...
Oh, we've got to keep it mowed. You've got to keep it mowed, of course. But I'm, I'm a little shocked that we're able to mow the whole place with one mower.
Yeah, because I use the John Deere to do like the steep hill sites and stuff, because it's got four-wheel drive on it. So, it runs like a tank. It's a good one.
Of course, you've got to have an off-ramp.
Yeah.
I'll tell you, seventy-two inch zero, you can cover a lot.
You can pull a lot of any mower off in a hurry.
Yeah, I think, I think what those do with the, just the, the one that he presented, and then the seventy-two inch deck we got there, the diesel, I think we'd be all right.
I think so.
To keep up.
Is the SCAG able to be a backup and...
I, we, yeah, we got it repaired at the end of last season, just in case. I didn't know if I'd be able to get the funds or not, so... They welded the frame, but it's...
It could be used in a pinch for some backup work, or, you know, if you get behind, somebody can jump on it and mow for a while.
Yep.
Yeah, it's not the prime duty job, we know that.
Yeah.
I don't care which one. I mean, I think I was probably, I don't have the budget in front of me. I didn't grab it before I came in, but I think we're probably looking at having to do an additional parking rack for it. But that's, I mean, he has reserve. I can't remember how much, but it's pretty healthy. I mean, we've kept that, uh, kept that pretty good. And, and frankly, as I said, this needs to be said, is that, you know, last year and the year before, that park was very, very close to being self-sufficient. I mean, toward its bringing in enough revenue to pay for its expenses, so... To put an additional in on that parking rack fund, I don't think it's any issue whatsoever. This is obviously something that they're going to have to have. We want the park mowed.
Yeah, we want it mowed.
Yeah.
Hasn't been that many years ago, you know, the state of Indiana decided that they weren't going to mow part of their parks, you know?
Yeah.
And what a disaster that was, because the number of complaints that they got.
I remember it.
You remember that? Well, we don't want that, so...
Which one would you rather have?
Uh, the board approved the one that had the twills on there. That's the one I'd probably...
And Pam's on the board, by the way, for those that don't know, or whatever. I'm fine with that. I mean, it, to me, it's really your guys' decision, so...
Make the motion that we buy the one with the twill tire.
Don't want to adjust that, that we funded. We're not supposed to really buy it, but...
Mike, Mike said...
It's okay.
Yes.
Have they run my account in the red on the concessions?
Yeah, let's talk real quickly about that, because that's our...
Well, let's finish that.
I'll second his motion.
So, it's a second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, now you can...
So now you got these hand-type checks, subject to commissioners, uh, sent over to us, uh, for what I would appear. One of these here is, is stuff for maybe Easter.
Yeah, because this is early this year. Our, uh, April first, actually.
Your, your Easter deal is April first.
Yeah.
Easter is April ninth.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so you've got that stuff, and then this other one look like disc golf material?
Yeah, it is, to sell for the season.
Okay, all right. So why are we...
Shouldn't be...
You just don't have the revenue in that fund right now?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that the key? Or this is a parking rack concession fund?
Yes, his cash, he doesn't have the cash to fund that, so the cash is in the red if we pay those bills, but his revenues will start at the end of this month, so...
No problem with that.
It's just a kind of a...
Temporary loan.
Yep.
No, we don't even have to temporary loan that in the calendar zone.
No, just, just a...
Just write it in the red, and then it'll catch up.
The bills, okay.
It'll get bills, okay.
It'll add.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chris, good job.
Thanks, Chris.
All right. Mr. Prosecutor?
Well... Oh, hey. That's a cool new. How long's that been going on?
Chair getting a little warmer, man.
I gotta say, you've been here. Yeah, we'll, we'll take care of it later.
Well, the sheriff approached me early this year about, he wanted to purchase a new body cam system. And he approached me about trying to help out with paying for that, uh, out of, you know, some of the diversion funds and seizure fund and that type of thing. Uh, so I told him I'd look into it. And, you know, you know, I have purchased body cams in the past, I've been doing it for years, but, um, nothing quite to this extent cost-wise, so... Uh, when I looked at the statute, you know, there's kind of a, there's a list of roughly ten things that specifically can be paid for out of diversion. And then there's a kind of a catch-all that's like, well, anything else that's useful that is approved by the prosecutor and the fiscal body. So I didn't feel like this necessarily fit perfectly into any of those listed things. So that's why I wanted to, you know, make sure we had the council's approval on this before we did this. The proposal is, and I, I don't know the rest of the money, I don't, you'd have to hear from him, because I don't know where that's coming from. What I said, what I told him I would be willing to sign off on, subject to your approval, of course, is the, the down payments. I don't remember exactly the total, but what I would be willing to sign off on would be thirty thousand out of the seizure fund, uh, which, uh, I believe there's forty-some thousand currently in that seizure fund. And, in all honesty, the lion's share of that forty-some thousand most likely came from sheriff's cases, you know? I don't have a breakdown, I'd have to look, but I can get that if you want that, but I'm pretty confident that the lion's share of that came from sheriff's cases. The DNR might have had a little bit, but, um... So, so it'd be thirty, thirty thousand out of that fund, uh, with an additional five thousand out of pre-trial diversion. That would go toward the down payment. Then, after that, would be ten thousand a year for the next three years. That would all come out of diversion. And then there is a fifth-year payment, which my proposal to him was that I, that would all be on the sheriff to figure out, but... So that's, I guess, with regard to money that's coming out of seizure slash diversion, that's my proposal for that. If you want to hear more about the actual system and all of that, but I, you know, I guess we both know a little bit about that. He might know more, but, uh, that's what I got.
How about the Cliff Notes version?
Unless you have any questions.
How about the Cliff Notes version on the system? Because I'm going to somewhat play devil's advocate here, because I, I... Body cams are all the, all the noise now, and I absolutely think that we need to protect your officers with body cams. I'm a strong supporter of that. But also, I, I don't hear of them costing sixty-five thousand dollars. Uh, I hear of them costing, you know, a few hundred to a thousand apiece, give or take. So, why is this better?
Well, I guess let me say a couple of things, and then, uh... We've been down the road with the lesser, lesser ones, and it just seems like there's constant issues with them. You know, either, oh, you know, my battery went dead, or this happened, or that happened. This system is designed to, basically, they, they install essentially a computer in the vehicles, uh, and then everything just kind of automatically gets uploaded into that computer, which then goes to the cloud, and then I have access to it also. It can also be integrated, which this cost includes the integration with the CAD system, uh, so that they can, uh, they can, they can pre-program, depending on what parameters they want. Okay, if we, we get a call to such, such address, uh, this thing is pre-programmed to automatically come on when we are within, you know, one mile of that address, or whatever, in case we... So we don't run into the, oh, I forgot to turn it on problem. Shouldn't, anyway. Uh, if they're in a dead zone, it still keeps recording. It might not be going up to the cloud at that time, but still recording, and then as soon as you're out of that dead zone, then it should...
Transfer.
Yeah. I have, I went up to, Fountain County's been using it for a year. I went up and met with the prosecutor up there and kind of looked to see how it looks from his, once he's looking at it, you know? And, uh, it, you know, looked good. I asked him if he had any problems. He said, no, they haven't had any problems with it at all. Uh, also, just from a convenience standpoint, uh, the ones that we're dealing with now, we do have access to. I mean, the guys have to go back, they have to go back, and I don't know exactly what you do, but they have to do something affirmatively, like upload it and everything. And then sometimes that's not done right away, because, you know, they're busy, got to go sleep, whatever, and then, so we may not have access to it right away, but, um... But then also, when, for whatever reason, when we go, a couple of things. I'm not always super busy, but, you know, sometimes I'm pretty busy, and when I, when I, when it's time to, when it's time to, hey, I'm ready to, I'd like to watch this body cam, you know? And I know it's going to be a half an hour or an hour. I don't want to flip it on and then, you know, I got to wait ten minutes for it to load, you know? And then the system, I don't know, it's like you get halfway into it, and hey, I'd like to, you know what? I'd like to hear that again, and you go, want to go backwards, and then you get, it doesn't work, you got to go all the way back to the beginning. It's like, I've just sat here for twenty minutes, I don't, I just want to back it up a little bit. Anyway, so I asked the prosecutor about all of those kinds of problems. He said they, they haven't had any kinds of issues like that. He showed, he actually pulled up one and showed me. It's like, yeah, we can back it right up, no problem, do all that. You know, I, I, I get it, and I, I was kind of shocked too when he...
But the moral of the story is, you get what you pay for.
Yeah, and I, what I'm asking you to do more or less, sell that, so, Jason, about from your seat.
So I was kind of shocked too at that cost, and then, also, the guy, you know, I, you know, they have a patent, I guess, on this, and, uh, obviously, at some point, that'll run out, and eventually, some of this...
It'll mend it.
Probably come down, but, anyway.
I, I feel the citizens and jurors expect body cam footage on everything now.
I agree.
And if you don't have it, it looks, doesn't look good.
True.
So I expect it as well. So these constantly uploads, as long as they're eight hundred feet of the car, like Steve says, if you go beyond that, it stores it on the camera, and when you get back to the camera, it uploads it automatically. So there should be no...
No human interaction.
Yes, no uploading issues. They also come with a holster sensor. We had a shooting the other day, officer caught a ceramic shooting, couldn't turn his body cam on. Like, you know, I understand. So anytime you pull your weapon, these come on.
Come on.
Uh, they also have a G, this'll put GPSs in the car, so we'll know where they're at. So it's more than just a body cam.
I am an, absolutely, one thing you said there, people expect it. Well, it's kind of like procedures and policies and stuff, they're CYAs, right? And, and this is too. All right, so if you do have, God forbid, a, a serious incident happen, you know, the officer is filmed, what he saw was filmed, and if that, when that officer does, follows the procedures and does everything he's supposed to, it's right there, folks, black and white, right?
It protects the county and...
Protects the county, it protects the officer, it protects, uh...
Protects the person they're...
Protects the person they're after, right? I mean, it, it covers, you know, nobody's memory is good enough to recall all that at that point in time, so...
I'm a big fan of them, and yeah, I forgot about the holster sensor. I mean, that's a good, you know, like, like Jason mentioned, in this day and age, everybody kind of expects it now. And if, and if you hear like, oh, yeah, we have, but, you know, we have body cam, but...
When you turn on.
You know, yeah, the guy got shot, but it didn't work, that, or body cam didn't work.
We forgot to turn it on.
You know, it just, that's not a good look, you know?
Nope.
Anyway, there were some, there's another agency, is it Vigo County that's also been using this?
Vigo, Terreault City.
Same system.
Like most of the surrounding areas.
And you talked to some of the guys.
Except for Marin County. They're looking at it right now, with, along with us.
You talked to some of those guys in Marin County, right?
Yeah, no complaints really.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but isn't it if your, if one officer draws and, you know, his camera starts recording, if somebody else is within immediate vicinity, and they don't have their camera on at that point in time, theirs starts recording too, correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
They also retrofit it, like currently, the Gepwade, you don't, you know, wear one, but... But currently, you know, the guys have these separate, you know, things, but this company retrofits the, the, it, it looks pretty similar to this, maybe a little bigger, but right into their existing, you know, uniforms.
It's a little profile.
And, so it's basically...
You have to worry about it flying off in a fight.
Yeah, it, it doesn't fall off, which I've had that before too, you know, they're wrestling or whatever, and it fell off, and, you know, you got a nice shot of the sky, or the ground, or whatever, but not actually what's happening. So there's that, and I think he was describing, as far as the recharging it, it's like some kind of magnet or something, that it's like a simple, they don't have to take it out to re, it's, you know, they do have to recharge it, but it's some kind of magnet thing that they just kind of click on there, makes it much simpler.
So what's the total cost of the system?
Uh, you have a total, I've got it here somewhere.
Is this buying the cameras for the other departments in Park County, or just the sheriff's department?
Yeah, it would just be the sheriff's office. I believe, though, my understanding is that if another, correct me if I'm wrong, or, I don't know this for sure, but I think, my, I think that if another agency wants to try to, uh, basically get into the same system, since it's CAD-integrated, that part's already kind of done, and then you just would need...
They're buying...
You would just need...
Buying the additional units, right?
Uh, you got the total, or?
Yep. Hundred eleven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars.
And that is, that's a five-year...
That's over five years.
That's a five-year contract, so that, which includes, you know, for the five years, uh, any service, whatever, you know? That's on the...
We're paying right around ten thousand dollars for cameras and our hotspots, so that's what...
Go away, so that goes away.
Yeah. So it's ten thousand dollars a year.
Uh, also, like, any software updates or anything too, that's all included in, it's a five-year contract.
In the five-year deal.
Yeah.
What is the forfeiture fund number? You know, you want to be known?
I might have it here, because I requested that information, but I don't remember if I stuck it in yet.
Been too long, sorry.
I've, about half news to me, sorry.
Uh, I wanted to say when I checked on it, there was forty-something in there.
I'm not, yeah, I mean, okay, but, fund number.
Well, that was in the pre-trial version, but it's probably with, uh, there's some there. Is that in it? Or is that diversion?
Forty-nine oh four.
Forty-nine oh four. Sure is. Forty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-three cents. All right, so what, what do you need from us? Is the approval to go ahead, right? And of course, one of these is going to requ, both of these are going to require some sort of action, I, because I assume, are you taking your five thousand out of diversion out of your existing budget?
Honestly, there may not be enough for that. I, I, I'm requesting an additional.
Okay.
For that, out of, out of diversion, yeah.
So what we're looking at here is a thirty thousand dollar additional out of forty-nine oh four, and a five thousand dollar additional out of eleven eighty-two, right? Is that right? Pre-trials, eleven eighty-two?
Uh, yes.
And then the next three, you can include in your budget request.
Yeah.
As normal.
And then like some of the rest, I, I don't know where the rest is coming from.
Where is the rest coming from?
Yeah. Well, I got a tech, I got a tech grant to cover, probably enough to cover the first two years. And then I would utilize commissary or...
To be, to be determined, to be determined.
I think I got the first two years covered already. So I got Steve paying for most of it.
RPD'd be interested in getting in on the system, probably?
Uh, I've talked with our chief about it, and I think maybe down the road, it might be a conversation that, that's had, but as of right now, there's no...
No interest? I was going to say, if, if, if they would get in on the system, they'd have to buy their cameras, obviously, but, uh...
Well, and I've talked, I, I actually reached out to Bill the other day, like, letting him know kind of what's going on, and just saying, hey, I don't know what your problems, you know, might be right now, but, uh...
Didn't see, I was thinking maybe...
He kind of, he kind of said, well, I might need a little time here to kind of see what...
Get, get some help on the annual from, from the town board, maybe, if, if they get on the system, might be part of your funding there. I mean, I understand that they're going to be a smaller, a lot smaller portion, but if they do decide to get on, maybe you won't got a deal with, they could help pay for the annual.
Okay, so we got, I got this stuff down, two additionals that we'll have to consider for April then. Oh, I got what I need, I suppose.
Well, I think it's a fine, I think it's something we need to do, I think. Especially with Steve, especially with Steve willing to help fund it while I'm keeping...
Hey, well, we do have him on camera, same thing again.
Yeah, that's why we have that camera here.
One other thing I, I guess, kind of forgot about, uh, also within that system, and I haven't done it yet, but they said they would show us, uh, it's, you can go in, block faces, you know, you...
When you release it publicly, you can protect the innocent. Lack of bare witness.
Things like that.
Children.
You can put a transcript down at the bottom, you know, words, and, which right now, I'm guessing we could probably find somebody, you know, that really is good at that stuff, and pay them something to go in and do that.
Yeah, probably.
If we ever, you know, had to do that for some, so far, we haven't really had to, but, anyway.
So is everybody reasonably all right with going with that? Because there really is nothing for us to vote on today. We'll, we'll present the, um, the additionals in April for your approval then, but if everyone is fine with that, well, we'll proceed, let them proceed.
Okay, I think the only, on that, because they actually, the original quote was a little higher. So I think that price is good, that quote is good until, uh, March thirtieth.
You can move on it.
First, you said?
Yeah, go ahead.
I guess I didn't hear that.
Yeah, go ahead, but I mean, there's nothing really for us to...
Yeah, we, we just can't approve, we can't approve.
I don't, I don't hear as well as I used to.
I know. Sorry. Got to listen, that's... Uh, we can't, we just can't approve the additional until April, but...
So it's got to be advertised and paid for.
I assume that the group at this point is supportive and that they will go...
I see nobody saying that they're not going to support it, so I think you're good to proceed.
And then Pam mentioned that since there's a contract here, we need to go before the commissioners wish.
Yeah, meanwhile.
I wish, I'll let you take care of that, since you're signing on to the contract, so...
Now, does every officer will get a camera then, is that correct?
That will give us, uh, twelve cameras, so every full time, and one for, uh, reserved, that little chair.
Okay, sounds like a good deal.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Awesome, thanks, guys.
Yeah, nice to see you.
Good to see you.
Thanks for coming by here.
Same time next month, if you want to come.
Yeah.
All right, thanks. You're standing here?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
All right, thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks for your donation.
Yes, thank you.
Well, sure. Hey, when you get out of here, call me, because I want to talk to you about the other thing. All right, thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to this department head comments.
Katie? I can't keep up with all that, but, um, ratio study has not yet been submitted. First deadline I have missed since I have become assessor. But the reason for that is the state had my sales file for a month and three days, and they gave me three days to hit my deadline. And we're having some pro-val issues, so, um, all that in a nutshell, I expect to hopefully be submitted by tomorrow, but... And then Pete Boe is meeting on the thirteenth, so I will not be at your next meeting, but we're meeting on exemptions, and, uh, we may have another exemption from Richard and Thelma Jean Hapke. We had been to tax court on that before, um, and we've won, but she has indicated that she will be filing another exemption. So just giving you a heads up, if she pursues it all the way to tax court, I will need some legal assistance. And that's all I have.
All right. Sheriff?
Uh, our inmate count currently is seventy-one. That's nine out of counting, one DUC. Uh, billing for inmate housing this quarter, fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars, fifty cents. And then reported collections is fifteen thousand, nine hundred eighty-six dollars and seventy cents.
A question for the sheriff? Okay, thank you. All right, we're ready, Dan.
We'll let the auditor talk about the appointment.
The auditor can talk about the appointment, I guess.
Mark Spelding came to the office the other day, and the Park County Learning Center Board always has a commissioner and a council member on their board, and the council member was Larry Yamiyami, and so that he needs to be replaced, and Mark suggested.
Saying light it up your alley.
What's the approval, call it typecasting.
Their next meeting is planned to be March the fourteenth at four o'clock.
What do you think about that?
Would you be willing to do that? Okay, well, we'll need a motion in a second.
Motion to appoint Tom to the Park County Learning.
Motion by J V, second by Cam, all fair.
Can you, uh, add that to our, our appointment list, because?
First idea of that.
First time I ever heard of this.
First idea of that.
Please add that to the appointment list, so we can deal with it.
They've both been commission and council members for a long time.
Yeah, yeah. News to me that we even had an appointment to that, so.
It not existed.
Okay, let's move on, so approval of the minutes for the, uh, February ninth meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes is presented.
I'll second.
Most been made in second, approve the minutes, all in favor? Uh, attachment there is for the additional appropriations.
Madam auditor, you handled these, so you want to fill in the blanks on these, uh, additionals?
What do you mean, fill in the blanks?
Well, just tell us what they're for, basically.
It's about, I, oh, I made a copy of the backup.
Okay, so. The workforce one, it looks like to me, that's the nurse agreement with Plutton, with the hospital, Union Hospital, Plutton, for the health nurse, would appear, um, that was, well, one of those that wasn't approved. Wasn't, uh, actually appropriated last year, surprise. The ARP one is the, uh, that's the phone system for the jail.
Talked about last month.
We talked about last month. For forty-eight thousand, four hundred twenty-three dollars and sixty-six cents, the workforce nurse one's thirty-six thousand for the audience. The drug, these drug ones, uh, these ones for the next year probation ones, um, I, I, I can vouch for, or I can say why this happened is, they had requested in this bulletproof vest one, particularly an encumbrance. Well, there was no appropriation to encumber. So this was grants that the prior auditor just appropriated, and we, of course, passed the resolution last year that all grants were to be appropriated. So they are submitting these over as they get them now to be appropriated appropriately. Uh, so you can see their short letter about that one, and the bulletproof vest one is for drug testing, uh, it was, it had allowed for the purchase of a vest, which had been purchased, and drug testing supplies, so. There you go. The, uh, last one is for the cost for, uh, sheriff's department, school resource officers out of a, another one of these grant funds. It was named, what it was named at the time, but can be used for whatever they get the revenue in for, so. The school resource officers went to training, so obviously we'll pay for that, so. There you go, that's a good one. Well, if I write, then I'll answer one.
Okay. Well, you can't count on us to read anything ourselves.
That'll work. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the additional.
Okay, let's see, is there any questions or notice, do you have any questions? All right, so you moved?
I did.
Tom seconds, all in favor? All right.
I'll answer for the transfers.
Okay, why don't you present the transfers then?
Uh, we'll have a resolution, I assume, for a copy of that, right?
Yes, I do.
Okay, yeah, I didn't, I didn't have seen it, but, uh, this, these two transfers are in the health fund for, um, to deal with encumbered shortfalls, uh, we will deal with a very long resolution here in a few moments, that will deal with a bunch more of these, but when we did the encumbrances, we were short being able to encumber exactly what was necessary by these amounts. So that's thirteen dollars and ninety-six cents to, uh, the sanitary and food inspector line, and a hundred and fifteen dollars and nineteen cents to extra clerical line. They're both coming out of social security in the health fund, eleven fifty-nine. I wrote those yesterday, uh, we, we generally have plenty of reserve in that social security line. That's the transfers before us. Questions?
Need to prove the transfers, second.
Most been made, second, approve the transfers, all in favor?
Aye.
Pay the jury?
Then make a motion to pay the jury.
Most been made, second, pay the jury, all in favor? Okay, no reappropriation of funds. Monthly reports, clerk submitted. Report of collections, I believe.
Appears to me.
And then we have, um.
Three hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and seventy-seven cents. It's a lot.
We have the compare, this is the.
Mostly comparison.
Comparison, this.
I don't know if you guys thought it or not, but I gave it to you.
It's kind of a supplement to the old cash flow, it's, it's a nice report at times, to see what the balances are in the funds and so on.
Yeah, it's good to get back to.
Yep.
To doing that, so we appreciate you doing that. Uh, EMS report, I think Julie also emailed, I think everyone, she couldn't be here. Have that. Uh, redevelopment?
Did not meet.
Did not meet. Uh, courthouse security did meet. Uh, we had no incident reports to discuss, uh, there was an issue with the camera system, I believe in the assessor's office. The transmitter in your office was not working properly.
It was flipping.
Throwing off it or something.
Yeah, it was flipping all the time, of course, when I'm sitting there, catches the corner of my eye, and so I just called Jason and he did whatever.
Think they reset it or whatever, it's been fine senses from what I was told.
Correct.
So, and I think that's happened in another one too, you're not the first one, but occasionally they have some issues, but apparently it's fine now. Uh, we talked about, and are looking into revising the, uh, court security plan, which is required by the state of Indiana. Ours is older and, uh, very long, and so I think we're gonna try to condense it and, uh, maybe modernize it a little bit as we move forward. Uh, we also discussed, uh, mock, possibly conducting a mo, another mock training exercise, maybe in late summer, early fall. We were gonna discuss that with, uh, the sheriff and see what they might, see what he thinks. Um, it's been a while since we had, did one, I think it was in eighteen or nineteen, since we actually did one.
It was, he was the auditor.
He were the auditor then, okay. So we discussed that, but other than that, it was fairly short. Plan commission?
Uh, Matt, we've got, uh, have petition forced to change, to get a variance on a piece of ground out by Ferndale for a church camp. Uh, it's been ongoing for two or three years, D and R's been on for digging, swimming, walls in the creek, and neighbors are all upset. Anyway, it's been tabled until we get some more information, it's, uh, it's been kind of a mess. And would like to publicly thank the commissioners for finally giving us an appointment that shows up. You can put that in minutes, we waited about three years for them to move on that, but they finally did, and thank you.
Okay, solid waste and then no, no meaning, all right. Okay, you ready to talk about encumbrances, it's in your packet?
Encumbrances, so the auditor and her staff closed up the rest of the encumbrances that were submitted over from me, from the department heads, uh, to include any payroll and so on and so forth, uh, we believe to be a good summary of, or a good total is a value of eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-four cents. By fund in your packet, if you want to see the big laundry list, I'm sure Mary Ann has it. I told her not to print that for everybody, figured cared enough to want to go through each individual line of it, but, um, that's what I would present for encumbrances to be adopted by the council.
You might remind the audience of actually what an encumbrance is.
More or less, this is commitments that have been made, uh, but have not hit the appropriation line by the end of the year. And so examples of that would be, uh, you know, the pay, so your last pay of a calendar year actually happens in the first of the next year, so that check amount would be, uh, an encumbered amount because it was on a twenty-twenty-two appropriation. Um, the ceded one example, three hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. Uh, the lion's share of that is the purchase of the county highway dump truck that come out of that line. The agreement had been made, the purchase order had been generated, but the check has not been sent because the truck had not yet been delivered. You will also see in, uh, uh, or was it? Riverboat, thirty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars, that's the balance left to do on the ambulance three mount that we sent off a day or two before the fire and still have not gotten back, in your report from Julie, right? That was paid, that we had appropriated that in twenty-two, or twenty-two for Riverboat, and it's not been paid. Those are examples of what you have, the highway, a lot of that's repair parts that they had ordered that, you know, the billing cycle ends up being after the first year, so. That's what we got.
Hey, any questions on the encumbrances? So we need a motion to adopt those.
Motion to adopt the encumbrances is presented.
Sorry. Motion been made in second to adopt the encumbrances, all in favor? Okay.
We dealt with hand type checks already.
Oh, was that was the, okay.
With Chris.
Chris, gotcha. Okay, next.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three oh three, uh, this is the rest of the corrections that we talked a little bit about transfers, so. Down through all of the first page. So the, with the last one being one thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-two cents. Everything from the top down to that is the catch-up pay. Uh, as you well know, in twenty-twenty, we changed, we wrote, we adopted a salary ordinance that specified when the first and last check of a pay period was, and that required a catch-up, which was done in February of twenty-twenty, which also led to everybody being, at that point, being overpaid a day, which was recovered last year, but in the grand infinite wisdom of the individual doing this, anybody that hired on since was still paid two weeks in arrears. So last month, we, or the month, yeah, last month, we adopted a resolution making transfers for some that we had identified early. Mary Ann and her staff has gone through the entire employee list to see anybody that hired in after the catch-up date and was still employed, to catch them up, so that all salaried people are now paid current. Okay, so everybody is now on the same schedule as far as salary goes. You are paid on Friday, you technically are paid by the book on Monday for time work through the prior Friday. So be noticed, you might want this in the minutes, please, that anybody who leaves the county who is salaried at this point will receive their last check at that point. They will not get another one two weeks later. You have been caught up, everybody is now on the same schedule, okay? I want that very clear, because I know that that call is coming at some point in time. All right, so everybody now is in the same situation. This does not affect hourly people, they are still paid in arrears because you have to be able to turn in time. Okay? All right. So to fix that, we, the auditor's staff paid out these individuals to catch them up, and that also then hits that appropriation, and then their salary number will be off because they have now, will have received twenty-seven pays this year to get caught up. So we have to move money into those lines to fix that. So that front page is all those different ones, okay? The next two pages are catches up from encumbrance issues, uh, for whatever they may be. And I calculated these, so I'll stand behind them, um. These are amounts that the appropriation line was short, and these are only payroll, not deal with any other ones, we're not dealing with any other ones because that's the way those work. The payroll has to be, needs to be right, so for instance, the plat supervisor's amount left in the appropriation line was three dollars and eighty-five cents short of what that last check would be. Okay, so we encumbered three dollars and eighty-five cents less than what should have been eligible to be encumbered. All right. Twenty-five cents for deputy coroner, now some of these are larger, it's like part-time E M Ts are larger, there's a number of people in them, it's a hard one to predict, right? We fixed that anyway to catch that up, they could have probably been left alone, but you get the point, jail officers, so on and so forth. So with that being said, any of these that are individual lines, individual person paid out of these lines should come out exactly right at the end of this year for the encumbrance, should match the final chapter. Right? Get ready. All right, got you. I'm moving all that money to the tune of forty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-three cents from the commissioner's liability insurance line. Is that, any questions?
Crystal clear, isn't it?
It should put us right with the world.
It should put us right with the world now, and yes, there'll be issues with encumbrances from time to time in payroll because if somebody leaves, you pay out, and, but we've got to address those then, instead of just letting them snowball and go to hell like we have. And we can do that, that can be done.
Okay. Questions on that?
I wrote it, so I'm not moving.
Move to approve, uh, approve resolution twenty-twenty-three dash oh three.
Most been made in second to approve the resolution, all in favor? So in your packet, Mary Ann, we have this report from.
Pam suggested that I make you guys copies so you can read it.
Okay.
I used to bring them, thought you might still want to see them.
Okay, that's fine.
Withheld, uh, the state withheld one million, six hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars in income tax in Park County in the fourth quarter of twenty-two. And the number of businesses was four thousand, three hundred and forty-four, I don't, it's, I always struggle to understand the number of things that they present, but.
We also want to mention that even though that's collected in twenty-two, the county won't see that for.
Correct, correct. It sits up there, they draw some interest on it and everything, and then we get it eventually down the road. What the, the operative term is, the thing with these is see how they progress, because that tells you generally what your income tax revenues are going to be like going forward for a while. You start seeing that number going down, then you know that.
Mary Ann, anything else? Sign that, step, we'll send it around. Anything else from, how are things going in the office?
Oh, we're behind on getting, um, the finance report into the state board accounts, but we are working on it.
You might.
It's supposed to be in the twenty-eighth of February, but we're gonna get it in, have to get it in by the fifteenth of March.
We might explain that part of the woes are the fact that it goes back from a year from last year.
We can't get the numbers to match last year, so then they'll match this year, so we're working on it. Pam is working on that very hardly, and now I'm starting to help her, because she finally passed some work down to me.
She said you get to work.
Well, I had to get the phones coded correctly, I mean. I mean, and you can't have three or four people doing that. You, there, there was, um, 43 funds out of 166 that were not coded correctly. I don't know how many expenditure numbers were not coded correctly. I don't know how many receipt, and if you don't have those codes correct, they don't go to the right place in the, in the financial report.
Garbage in and garbage out.
Yeah, so, and, and like right now, I think there's... Eighty some funds out of our 160 whatever, that don't have a fund type assigned to it in a gateway. So I've gotta go through and assign fund types, and that's fun. So it's...
It's just like he said, it's garbage in, garbage out. Because in annual report, the way that system's set up, I assume it's still the same, is that it feeds off of the prior one, and if the information in the prior one was wrong, the next one's screwed up too. Until you stop, until you break that and fix it, which is not, there's no good way to do. It's essentially start over again. It's, yeah.
Okay.
Turned helping train everybody, and then the payroll clerk had to be gone a week, the week of payroll because of the death of a family.
You know what? She just talked a little bit ago about them being late on sending back what she needed. If we're late on that going in, let them write it up.
They're gonna subpoena us on the 15th to bring all of our financial revenues to the state. I don't wanna do that. Okay?
Yeah, we're busy at that, sorry.
They could write it up, I don't care. Get it done and get it right.
They oughta, they oughta understand that.
But they don't.
Yeah. Well, they're, they're perfect, so they never have to say, or be late on deadline, never.
They're not late on anything.
Oh, no, never. Yeah, like I've never had to sit and calculate years worth of gadget to fix that they had wrong, so, yeah.
All right, anything else?
Just, uh, point of information, they did hire a new, uh, library director, which...
Oh, good.
Does affect the county council a little bit, so...
Who is it?
Uh, I think it's Nathan Adams, or Akers, Nathan Akers, I think.
No, Turhoe.
Yeah.
That was public library Turhoe, didn't it?
Yes. He was a, yeah, a department head or something in Vigo County Public Library System from Southern Park County, under River Park.
Yeah, I think he's planning on moving back to Park County, as I understand it, so he starts the 13th, March 15th.
Great. All right. All right.